Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, May 26, 2022. The time is 2:02 PM. And I will turn it over to our city clerk for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lyken.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg is excused today. Councilmember Storset.
Here.
And Councilmember Wood.
Here.
We have six of seven present today.
Okay, great. So we'll jump right into our discussion items and our first on the agenda is the Gig Harbor Sports Complex. And Katrina Knutson, our interim city administrator, will be kicking this one off for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. Staff, we're excited to discuss with you information regarding the sports complex today. The presentation is going to be a true dream team effort between Public Works Director Jeff Langham, Parks Manager Matthew Keo, and interim city engineer Aaron Holst, and myself, and we hope that this session will provide some clarity and answer some questions that the councils had regarding the sports complex as a whole and where we are going. Our agenda today in walking you through this is we're going to talk a little bit about the purpose and the obligations that the city currently has with the YMCA in terms of contractual obligations as well as grant obligations. You'll receive a brief summary of the open house that was held on May 7. We will also discuss Phase 1B discussions, where we are, where we intend to go, and some of the check-in points on that. And then finally, we'd like to wrap up the work session with an overall discussion about potential next steps and unknowns regarding the sports complex as a whole, some ideas that we have, and then potential recommendations for council on how to move forward on Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the sports complex. And the real intent of this council, we know that there's some of you that were here during the master planning process or that participated in that process, whether it be from 2015 or 2018 and beyond. But there's some of you that have not been here for all of that, and so we'd like to provide some history that was provided to the community at large, and also answer some of your questions specifically regarding permitting of Phase 1B and how that relates to Phase 1A, kind of the more immediate actions, and then some, again, opportunities for potential civic engagement on Phases 2 and Phase 3. From this work session, we would like council to either provide us a status quo, move forward as has been previously directed by the council with the contract with the Y, Phase 1B moving forward, and then some of the options that we'll propose at the end if council would like us to budget for those in the 2023-2024 budget. And we'd like to hear that from council as well. But again, the intention is to have information sharing, answer council's questions, and be on the same page in moving forward with how we're going to address both the immediate concerns and immediate project really, that is Phase 1B and 1A, and the more overall process of the adopted master plan with all three phases. And with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Langham, the Public Works Director, to discuss a little bit more about the history and the city's obligations.
Thank you, Katrina. To start, I'm going to share my screen and I'm going to show you, and I apologize for not including the packet, but we had a 2017 map that shows the layout of the facility back then and what's included in the sports complex and what's around it. I'm going to zoom in a little bit here. I know this is kind of small, so give me one quick second. There. Is that better? Everyone see that? Okay. Okay, so I'm just going to quickly, we've had discussions on this in the past, but I'm just going to quickly run through how we've made it to where we are today. Again, this map that you have on your screen shows from about 2017 the properties that the city looked at, developed into the master plan and are including as part of the sports complex for Gig Harbor. It includes on here the acreage of each property. It includes the adjacent properties and the approximate locations, and I can, I'll be going through exactly what phases are associated with which ones. I do want to say this map is on the sports complex website that the city has. So if you want this in the future, definitely look at the sports complex website or webpage that City Clerk Stecker has prepared, and you can download or look at this again also. So real quick, the concept of a city facility with sports complex in Gig Harbor North started with the, in 2013 and before, when this property here on the south end of what was the Harbor Hill Commercial Platte created this parcel and dedicated it to the city, it's about seven acres, as a park. It was in lieu, it was part of the development agreement and in lieu of paying park impact fees. So that was the anchor that started all of this. And then master planning for this seven-acre parcel itself went on in two different phases in 2013, 2014, all the way until 2016. Multiple opportunities for the public and the Parks Commission to participate in this. And then there was an adopted plan, and then immediately after that, in 2016, the city looked over here into Little League Park Property and which was actually owned by, in the background, through title by Peninsula Light Company, and took over operation maintenance of the Little League fields. That's nine, little over nine acres. So what we call now Peninsula Light Fields is this parcel here. It's connected to the Harbor Hill Maintenance Association Stormwater Pond, which is the stormwater facility for all of the commercial platte of Harbor Hill on the west side of Harbor Hill Drive. So Costco, all these buildings up north, all the way down to the city, city's original park on the south side of YMCA. And so that pond, it's, it's private stormwater pond, and it's privately owned, but the ownership of that pond has, which the city of Gig Harbor is part owner of, has authorized, allowed the public to access this property. And so that's kind of been pulled into as a recreational portion of the sports complex. And then, of course, the YMCA, which is all about recreation. And then the city also then looked in 2017 at these two commercial parcels that already had been approved through development agreement, through concurrency for a commercial subdivision. And that process was completed in 2006, I believe. So we, the city, ended up purchasing from Olympic Property Group these two parcels, and then created the term Gig Harbor Sports Complex. And that now envelops everything in what you see as this dark blue line all around all of these properties.
Jeff, may I interrupt for just one second?
Sure.
I want to provide, to dig in just a little bit deeper here of what Jeff has said, the development agreement, there is a separate development agreement for this portion of Harbor Hill that of all the properties except for the Little League fields that Jeff has described, but also including the Costco property, Jeff, if you can put your cursor there, and then the businesses to the north of Costco. Those properties, as well as all of the city-owned properties and the YMCA, are part of a separate development agreement that was subsequent to the Home Depot Development Agreement and also a separate from the development agreements for the north and south residential subdivisions. And those, the uses for the parcels were discussed within the development agreement, and as Jeff mentioned, the two parcels that are phase, that are primarily Phase 1A and 1B are currently zoned PCD commercial, that is essentially the highest available use of commercial property that the city currently has in its zoning code. Within the master planning process, we did, city council at the time, did amend the development agreement for this area. And the amendment that was made was to remove the requirement for a connection from McCormick Creek Drive to connect from the McCormick Creek neighborhood through to Harbor Hill Drive. And that, again, was a requirement within the development agreement that the developer would connect that road through, again, that commercial business park subdivision. And so that requirement for that thoroughfare road was removed during that development agreement amendment.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Storset.
I'm muting myself. So just curious about a couple of the other properties in the area, since I know, I know this is back from 2017, but south of the Church and Art Center. Who owns that property there?
That is Harbor Hill Maintenance Association number two, I believe, and that is the exact same setup as Harbor Hill Maintenance Association number one. But it receives stormwater runoff from all of the business platte properties that are along the east side of Harbor Hill Drive.
Okay, gotcha. And then how about up on the, the north, yeah, the north end there on the other side of the school?
This is the Village of Harbor Hill.
Okay.
Parcel.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Why was the development agreement amended to remove the McCormick Creek Drive extension to Harbor Hill? Just curious.
Let Katrina answer that.
Yeah, thank you. The, at the time, the city was finalizing the improvements for Harbor Hill Drive extension that connects Burnham up to Sentinel. And so since that road was constructed, the, the need or desire to have McCormick Creek Drive be that, can't remember Jeff, what you termed that road, but a thoroughfare arterial, there would have been a lot of traffic through the McCormick Creek neighborhood. And the city engineer at the time, we discussed that, and with the creation of Harbor Hill Connection, that could be removed. And additionally, in the city looking to potentially have sports fields there, there would have been no way to have the sports fields be bisected by that road.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to take off that red line. It's not confusing anyone. So again, reaching back to 2006, when this was originally platted, I mentioned it real quick, but I want to focus for a second on the fact that this commercial platte, Costco, the properties is north all the way down to the city's park at the very south end, received its land use approval in 2006. And Aaron's going to go into this in a little bit more depth, specifically to Phase 1B, but that, when that platte was approved, all of the concurrency that the city reserves for all plats were set into motion and held. The water system model, the sewer system model, the traffic model, they all have reserved ERUs, trips, capacity in the system, in the modeling for these properties to be developed, fully developed. And so all we can get into that discussion later, but I, I just want to make sure that it's very clear that that's when all of that occurred, was back in 2006. And so when we moved forward into 2018, and I'm going to now jump on to the next page, this was included in your package as Exhibit A. That is when the sports complex master plan process began in depth. It was culminated in July of 2018 with city council essentially adopting this, this sheet as the master plan for the layout of the facility. And we've, this is, this is the actual 2018 document that was adopted, and then we highlighted here where sports complex Phase 1B is and sports complex Phase 1A is.
Jeff, may I interrupt one more time? Okay, maybe it's not the last time, but just want to give maybe a little bit more history as to the why of the sports complex in 2018, why there, 17, why there was a push for that. And Jeff, you may be mentioning a little bit more as we head into the presentation, but ultimately, I think we all are aware how much the city of Gig Harbor has grown between, you know, 2006 and now. And with our park system, the way that it was, we really did not have any active active recreation component into our parks. And when you almost double your population in 10 years, there becomes existing pressure, a lot of pressure, not only on our fields, but also our community partners, to include PennMet. So at the time, prior to us acquiring the Gig Harbor Little League fields, we really only had two baseball fields that were in city ownership and no soccer football fields. And the one baseball field was at Crescent Creek Park that could be reserved, and then the baseball field at Veterans Park is not able to be reserved due to a hearing examiner decision of it being a community park. And so the city at the time began to receive a lot of pressure, both from existing residents with families with children who needed sports fields, as well as that time, the Harbor Hill area up north, although Heron's Key had not yet been constructed, there were quite a few single-family homes that, and the Bracera Apartments that had been constructed in Gig Harbor North, and we started to receive significant pressure as a city to, what are we going to do? We have a lot more children that are moving into this community, and they don't have a place to practice all of the sports that I'm sure you've heard of. And so it was really in, in that light and building off of what was, well, is now Phase 3, where the master plan was for, in 2015, where the council, the Parks Commission and administration at the time really began to look at where can we place additional fields. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of that background for those who may not have been here during the time of the really significant growth that the community experienced between 2007 and 2016.
And as Katrina was saying, I mean, we have partners that we work with to help fill some of those needs. When the city acquired the Little League fields, it was always looked at as, wow, if we could, the Little League has access to those fields for, what, six months out of the year, February through July. And so the other six months of the year, they are available to other sports, but that's limiting because many of the other sports are also operating in that same six-month window. But with the school district fields, the limitations, as Katrina mentioned, on the city's own fields, and then the demand that there was just not enough with the Little League fields themselves, and so the intent has always been to find something that is synthetic lit as, and have those fields available. So that's why, that's how Phase 1 got to be first on the list.
Yeah, thanks. So I'm assuming from what you said that a community field such as Veterans Park is not available to be turfed and lit. Is that correct?
We, in, in order for that to, the city could turf the fields and potentially put lights on the field, although those were not evaluated during the SEPA process, so that would need to be done. If the city were to consider reserving those fields, that would need to be a modification through the hearing examiner decision.
Okay, thank you.
I think one other component, Jeff, sorry, that just came to my mind. Throughout this as well, the Village of Harbor Hill was gaining steam. Again, I think Jeff described where that location is proposed to be, next to Heron's Key. And so that was essentially vacant commercial economic development land at the time. And, and as we started getting new residents up in Gig Harbor North, and I know it's hard to imagine now, but back then, you know, we hadn't had residents up in Gig Harbor North before, and so we started hearing from them. And there was a concern of, you know, again, where are kids going to play, but do we really need that much commercial or office space up here? And so that, that was another consideration that the city looked at under that, at that time, and in further consideration of the purchase of the property that Phase 1A and 1B are essentially on today.
Councilmember Denson.
Yes, Director Knutson or Langham. One thing that, some comments that I know some of us have heard from constituents is, are we using, are we taking advantage of Peninsula School District fields? Enough. Could we do more there? So if you could address that. And then the second question I, I get a lot is, is this justified in the pros plan? Either the one we have now or the one that we had back in 2016?
Okay, I, I'll say that I think we'll address all of those. I can, I will be addressing our partnerships that we're going to be moving forward with in the future, including the, the school district. And I'm sure Matthew can address the pros plan. Okay. So I'm going to jump in next to our current obligations. What, what is sitting before the city now that we're already obligated to? You might be aware that we have three separate grants from the state associated with Phase 1A and Phase 1B. Phase 1A has two grants. One is a state appropriation, and the other is an RCO grant. Both of those were obligated by the state to the city more than four years ago, and they totaled about $500,000. So those are very specific to lighted synthetic turf fields, plural, with parking. And so that's an obligation that we are committed to moving forward with. The city also has a grant for Phase 1B from Washington State RCO. And that is, while we've been notified that we have received a grant, we haven't actually entered into a grant agreement. We're still waiting for federal paperwork. But that is for $500,000 also, and that is for the layout that was provided here. And I'm going to jump forward to this Exhibit C. Sorry, I want it to show up all the way. This is what was, this is the image that was provided as part of the RCO grant application. Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks. On that RCO grant for Phase 1B, I know it's related to this image right here, but is it specifically related to the layout or the number of items? Let's, if I take those pickleball courts and set three over here and three over there, that doesn't affect the grant. If I say, now I'm going to change the pickleball courts to a swimming pool, that would mess the grant up, right? So the actual layout is not limited by the RCO grant, perhaps the number and kind of facilities provided, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So those are the three grant obligations that we have currently. I'm going to go back up to the Exhibit A. The next obligation that we have is the lease with the YMCA for sports complex Phase 1A. That lease started with discussions and the development of a memorandum of understanding back in, I want to say it was 2018 and 2019, those discussions occurred. There was some very clear intent by the council at that time to work with the YMCA to develop Phase 1A. The sports groups, pickleball, or sorry, lacrosse, soccer, football, baseball, have had separate conversations with the YMCA, and the city has had its own conversations with the YMCA about demands on Phase 1A and use of Phase 1A. And so we entered into the MOU, and then the city have entered into the lease agreement finally in 2021. Those lease discussions took quite a long time because COVID hit, and YMCA's operations essentially stalled for a very long time. And then the city had its idea of how it wanted to see Phase 1A and the schedule for Phase 1A development, and the cost for Phase 1A that were originally expected to be in the $3.5 million range. By the time the YMCA received their estimates, it was between the $6 to $7 million range, so the costs basically doubled. So all of those factors were one reason why it took a while, but eventually the city and the YMCA entered into a lease. The city council at the time decided that, because originally, originally the intent was to build Phase 1A and then follow closely on the heels with Phase 1B. And that would allow the YMCA and the Phase 1A site to take the lead on, on grading and some development of some facilities. But because of the issues that YMCA ran into, they, they elected, as called out in the lease, to come after Phase 1B, and the council at the time really wanted Phase 1B to be scheduled to be kept on track for construction in 2022 or 2023. So Phase 1B is now first. We are under contract with BCRA. They are in the process of providing us with significant number of reports, traffic, lighting, noise, environmental reports, SEPA checklists, parking requirements, tree retention, everything about that. It's outlined. We've talked about that when the contract was approved back in March of this year. And so we have the lease that we're obligated to with the YMCA. We have our own contract with BCRA that we are proceeding forward with, and we'll have information back soon on that. So that's where we are currently with what we are obligated to and waiting to move forward with. Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks. Yeah. Can we go back to the Phase 1A, two grants, the state appropriation and the RCO grants, totaling about 500K?
Yes.
Was I correct in you, in hearing that those grants are with the city?
They are.
Okay, so when assuming now Phase 1A gets built, is the city, we would take that 500K and add it to whatever the YMCA is going to throw into construct Phase 1A? So that's our skin in the game?
Well, that and the property ownership, purchase and ownership, yes.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, then I, my second question is, the fact that Phase 1B is going to now be constructed first by the city using city funds, is there an increased cost to the city because 1A is then not being built? I, I know there's a tie-in of grading and everything else, but are we going to be, at the city, is the city going to be acquiring more costs to build first?
Yeah, that's a good question. The, the, we, we did have these concerns when we were finalizing the, the lease with YMCA on the sports complex Phase 1A. And the short answer is yes, it's going to cost the city more. The building where the concession stand and restrooms is constructed, the city's going to construct that now. And so that's going to cost us the city more. We're, we are going to do all of the grading for 1B, and as you were alluding to, we're going to have to tie in in some way with Phase 1A, at least a little bit of grading, so that we can be able to fully grade out our site. So it, but I, I can't tell you how much more it's going to cost, but I can say it will cost us more.
Yeah, we don't have a designs yet fully, so we won't know that until then. So is there any thought that we might get a credit back or something, or is this just something that we're going to be doing?
We've talked about that. I forget the exact language in the lease, but there, there is a, a brief statement in the lease that addresses this, this topic.
Okay.
Councilmember Storset.
Yeah, just talking about obligation.
Yeah, just talking about obligations with the Gig Harbor Little League fields. Is there any, I know we're not, we're not there yet, you know, if you, this is later in the presentation, but when we. When we, you know, came in with that, are we obligated to do these fields? Is that, what's the history on that portion or where are we at?
We don't have an agreement with the Little League. To be obligated to making the fields as is shown in the sports complex beyond the sports complex master plan document itself. There is no separate agreement, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I was just, you know, curious of it, you know, from things I've heard, it's, you know, comments will be made like. Oh, well, you know, we did this with the city because this is what we are expecting, but there's, I guess, nothing promised. Is that right?
Not that I am aware of. I don't know, Matthew, if you've read anything else, or Katrina, if you recall anything else, but I I don't remember ever seeing a separate document that obligates the city to construct phase two. As shown here. It's just part of the master plan that the city has adopted.
We do have a lease with a lease agreement with the Gig Harbor Little League that does spell out, you know, field conditions, et cetera, but it does not. And I see Matt has unmuted, so if that's what you were gonna say, Matt, I will defer to you.
Thanks, Katrina. I would have said the same and just recall that at the time of purchase, there were conditions that needed to be fulfilled. And the city did has done work there, as has the Little League. They've done things like bathroom rehabilitation.
And some drainage things, stuff, you know, regular probably maintenance, but some upgrades. Okay, thank you.
But Councilmember Storset, your question does bring up something that we talked about internally, and I guess, you know, we'll. Just say it right now is that the sports complex, though. The timeline that we were looking at, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty and twenty eighteen. You know, pushing forward, the anticipation was for the YMCA, the phase one A to be open already. So I understand and we empathize with the Little League. Families as to where the project is. None of us really forecasted the global pandemic that hit and unfortunately really hindered. You know, the YMCA shut down for a very long time. I know we like to kind of forget about that year and a half of not seeing each other, but. That was a pretty significant financial setback for the YMCA. And so. In that regard. You know, we do understand where the Little League. Is where the frustration comes from that, you know, phase one A was supposed to be done by now. And so I think their kind of expectation is. They were thinking by twenty twenty-two, it would have happened for them. And so. Just wanted to say that. We understand where they're coming from.
Add add one other little part to the question too. Just, I'm just curious on these type of, you know, sports complexes that have been developed in in. Other communities like ours. Is this a, like, I mean, we've been, right, it's been kind of talked about for a very long time, right? And the master plan, of course, COVID hit, but. Is this seem to drag on versus other places? I know COVID's obviously one excuse there, some funding stuff, but. I don't know. I've kind of look at it as, you know, it's something that we. You know, we probably needed a couple of years ago, right? Like, as it was planned, so I think that was good, and we've had these hiccups, so, you know, not to put the wagon in front of the horse, but. How do we get moving?
So I I think, yeah, the the lease, MOU and the lease discussions, I can tell you, at the end of twenty seventeen, there was significant momentum to get this going immediately. And then in twenty eighteen, the MOU got so lengthy discussions and then on and on. But yeah, I I would say that it it as long as the funding is there and the desire is there. It wouldn't usually take this long. It doesn't take this long to go through land use. I mean, it doesn't take years to go through this. We anticipate we'll be through design permitting and land use. In in about twelve months from the time of start, twelve to sixteen months. So, no, and then you construct and you're out another year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Woo.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I think I'm the only council person left from two thousand and eighteen. And this project, to my recollection, was always supposed to be a public-private partnership. With the city supplying the land and private entities coming in and actually building and paying for the fields. So one A, we have the Y and one B. For my recollection, we were always looking for a partner for one B and the same for one C. So we, the city was supplying the land and there would be a partner. Of whether it's a sport teams coming together and funding that, but it would not be the city funding those land, those finishing up those properties.
I I don't recall those discussions in depth. Katrina, I don't know if you recall anything different, but.
I do, I do definitely recall what Councilmember Woo is talking about. I think during that time, phase one was one. It's one was one phase at that time. It hadn't been broken down yet into three phases, and so. There was the anticipation in relation to the, was it three point five million that we paid for those properties, Jeff?
Yes.
That that we would supply the land and that our our private partners would then. Construct the improvements. And I think to the, I think largely we've gotten there, although of course now phase one B is more of a city. A city endeavor, but and we will get to talking about phase two and potential recommendations for that a little bit later. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks, just quick. Are you aware of any obligations on phase three? I I think we're all kind of using different phasing numbers here. My assumption is phase one or is what includes phase one A, one B, phase two, or the. The ball fields and then phase three is the. Other complex to the south of the YMCA. Do we have any obligations?
Back to this.
That you're aware of that? Would.
So just real quickly, phase two is the Little League fields, as you allude to, Councilmember Henderson. Phase three is the, is this seven acre parcel plus the one point oh seven acre parcel here?
Okay.
About eight acre.
And and currently, we do not have any obligations on phase three.
Okay.
Formal, of course, we do have the approved master plan, but we do not have any legal obligations for phase three.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to pause sharing my screen, but let hand this over to Matt. To have a quick summary of the May seventh open house. Matt, if you need those images back, let me know.
Hello, council. Glad to be with you and to be talking about this important project. I was asked to speak about the open house that we hosted. As part of a public information campaign and as a part of a direction to do significant public participation on this project. The open house did occur. It was scheduled for a Saturday, ideally at a time a little bit beyond sports times. But also available to the, obviously, hopefully to the widest part of the public from eleven to one. So that was, has many of you attended, and I certainly appreciate that our commissioners attended. It did occur here at the Civic Center and over a two-hour period, we had a hundred and fourteen people sign in. So I think it did show a lot of interest in the community to have that kind of arrival. I will say that as an informational-only open house. It was a challenge to try to get information out to a hundred and fourteen people who are standing in front of you at once. We had handouts and I was really pleased and grat, very grateful for the assistance we had in producing handouts. The handout showed the master plan, the handouts went over the history of the project. We took council direction to do that, to create a timeline and to speak to what our goals are. And so that we did communicate. I just will be candid that with that many people coming in. It was very challenging to give them explicit answers to their questions. We had a lot of questions over the period of not just the open house, but the week or two before, and those questions are lengthy. We compiled those questions and we are working with as a staff to try to. Figure out how to best answer those and to certainly call out the most frequently asked questions, and that's one of our goals, and we can speak to that. Public participation is one thing that I really hope to deliver for you and make sure is done well. Finally, about the open house. There were three stations. People could arrive and see the master plan and the graphics and so forth and hear general questions, or I took general questions and wrote them down as best I could. Then there was a station staff by the YMCA, and we're very grateful that Jesse Palmer was able to represent one A. And he was there to speak about the turf fields and the lights and the schedule that they're working under. As many of you know, the lease requires that they would get into permitting next summer and that the Y A, one A would have to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-four. He wasn't there to top timeline as much as just to answer people's questions about where the design is, and. He doesn't have a formal design for evaluation of all impacts. But he is able to speak about a lot of the design considerations that have been taken into account, and he did so. The third station was one B, and that was great shit, that was well-staffed by Aaron Holsk, and he too took a lot of questions and. Found that we had to write them down just because of the intensity of the interest. The people who attended of the hundred and fourteen. I think it was a good cross-section of the community. It was a very strong presence as evidence in the comments that we did receive of the interest in the sports fields being developed. There was a decision to have a comment box, though this was informational only. My suggestion is that if you have a public event, you need to be open to comments. And the comment box did get attention, and I know we found that it was a good tool to for us because people really wanted to be heard. And just getting a question answered wasn't quite what the public expected. The comment box was a saving grace in that regard so that people could tell us their thoughts. And I have those details. I can just tell you again, generally, the number of them was twenty-nine comment cards. I think that represented about twenty unique households because there were several people from same households commenting. So I wouldn't call that a significant number of comments, but of them, the vast majority were supporting of the sports fields. There were four submittals for doing more studies of the sports complex before going any further. And there were several requests that staff should follow up on, things like please produce the master plan for the community. I will just say that it was a pleasure, honestly, to have that much interest in the sports complex and to see our community come out like that. It was really valuable to have our interim city administrator there who was able, Katrina, able to visit and. Really connect with people while some of the rest of the staff got a little overwhelmed. I just appreciate the teamwork that went into it, including the assistance of Laura, our communication specialist and her team, so that we had meaningful handouts and. I think improving products for the public. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Matt. And I know that many of you council members were there and you were able to witness that, and if there's. Items that you would like to impart to your fellow council members about thoughts of the open house, perhaps we could hear some of those now. I see that Councilmember Storset has his hand up.
Yes, thank you. I I just want to say thank you to all the staff that helped and, you know, I talked with with you, Matt, for a little bit, and I felt bad. You were sweating because you were just go, go, go. But you kept a smile on the whole time. Your energy was was great. I I liked it because it was, you know, this like open house mentality is, you know, people are coming in to learn more. But it's also, you know, it's a social, and we haven't had that in such a long time. So I really thought it was great to bring that back up, especially as this is. Gaining speed again for some, so many people that I've talked to have thought, well, I thought this was already, you know, in the bag and, you know, on on the whole master plan and. You know, being able to walk them over and explain a little bit more on the timeline was very helpful. And so I don't, I only saw a few of the other council members there, and then we had to, you know, we had our shift change, but. But it's great to, great to see so many people show up and. I know a lot of people couldn't make it to just, it's tough, like we, we could do the morning, but not the afternoon part of it because of sports. So I I would be curious. I wish I could have been there for the whole thing because it was really nice talking with so many people. Definitely feel like there's a strong, strong presence and, you know, passion for these fields. So, thank you.
Councilmember Lykins.
Yeah, I just wanted to add from that open house. First of all, of course, Matthew, it was, it was such a great job. And it was so great to see energy, honestly, on all sides of the issue, people really caring. I was struck, living up in Harbor Hill myself, by how many families said to me. They wanted to walk there. They wanted to bike there. There is a large number of families that live in North Gate Harbor. It's a, it's a very young-ish community. Myself being one of the older-ish people. And how many people said they wanted a large playground to be together outside that the pandemic, the small neighborhood playgrounds got overwhelmed when more than four or five kids would be there? I also heard from a lot of people about the lawn area, how they were so excited to have a gathering place in Gig Harbor North. You know, we have the downtown and we have the, you know, the amazing downtown, you know, village. But up in Gig Harbor North, they were saying, wouldn't it be great if we had a food truck day or we had a little market or something like that? So people up here were really excited and they were really excited to walk to it. So it was interesting to hear, and I hear people's concerns, but you know, it's one of the things. As council, we have to look at the whole city. And take it in, and it's, it's hard, but we really appreciate everything you did, Matt. Thanks.
Councilmember Barber. You're on mute, council member.
I just, I want to echo the thanks for staff and Aaron hasn't gotten called out yet, but. Aaron had a long line every time I looked over to try to say something to him. There were a lot of people who wanted to chat with Aaron. I mean, and Matt also, but let's let the unsung hero get a little attention here. He was under the gun. The thing that struck me that day were the number, as Brenda said too, the number of families who came. But also the thing that I heard from. A lot of people, and it was people who were against, is when I spoke with them. Or I shouldn't say against, they were for a little bit more study. But when I spoke with them and we talked about impact and we talked about. How the impact has to happen in phases and they understood more about why that happens. It seemed to resonate. So I really feel like having. The event helped people to see the whole, but also how the pieces fit into the whole. And when we told, when I I was talking with someone about. How when we build phase one, phase one. It's going to have an impact on traffic. But we don't know what that really is until it's actually done. And so if we do phase one, phase two, phase three at the same time, the impact. I think we don't, it won't be realistic because we don't know. How many people are gonna walk from Gig Harbor North to the parks, to the fields, that kind of thing. So I think as people get more and more education. They're getting more and more understanding of what's going on. I did also hear from a lot of the sports parents. That they just want to get this done. They've been waiting, as Seth said, for so long. It's just time to get going. And that's, I feel like. That's what we told them we were gonna do before, and we need to keep going. We need to keep that promise. Thank you.
Councilmember Woo.
Thanks. Yes, it was a really good informational day. So thanks to the team for. For getting this done in such an efficient and informative way. I, when I was there, I spoke to a gentleman from the Little League teams. Who told me he had money and he could get money. To do the infield in the Little League, on the Little League fields, and if if we can take money from folks like that. And I can get his name. I don't have it at my fingertips right now, but I'm happy to give you his information and his name and have him to get in touch with you. If this is a group of people that can get the money together to get the Little League fields done. He also said, which I guess we can't do now, but he also was, he also asked about Veterans Park and said that he could get the money. Now, I know a lot of people say a lot of things, but but maybe if these folks can actually have. If they have a resource for this money, can the city accept this resource and and. And if there is someone like that, does this come to you, Jeff? Who does this come to, this information?
Well, I would say the information for opportunities. For these sports fields and for parks in general should be. Sports fields and for parks in general should be directed toward Matt. And then he can disseminate from there.
Oh, go ahead, Jeff, sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, I was gonna jump into resources, funding. I mean, fu- funding is is definitely a big part of the picture that you have to have to build these things. But you need your design, you need your studies, you need your concurrency. And so there's there's a lot to it and the Little League has their schedule. And it takes more than a year to build these. So we have to have a place for the Little League to go in that year when the. Fields are being constructed. So i- it's which one comes first and in what order do you do it? And so that's all the decisions that have been previously made and so the momentum is already there. I understand the frustration that that we can't get to phase two quicker if that's the desire, but you know.
I'll get that name and send it along to Matt.
Thank you, councilmember Woo. The I talked spoke with that gentleman as well and I. Put him in touch with Matt at the day. I do know that Matt was very busy and met so many people, but. I did let them know that if there is significant funding opportunity that is likely to happen to be. In touch with us and we'll talk a little bit more about a potential for phase two. Just in a little bit.
And next is, we're gonna talk, I'll have a little bit of a focus on phase one B, but before we do, I just want to go back to. The comments that Matt received. He he has distilled those comments in a great form for staff. When we put together today's presentation. He disseminated those to staff. We hope that we can answer either through today's presentation or on the website. Many of the questions that were asked.
So that's correct. Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, we're anticipating hitting the vast majority of the questions that were asked during this presentation to you, council. And we're gonna take the recording from this in which staff is giving this information and place that on the sports complex website so that folks can go on there and. Have a place to listen to this presentation as well. And we appreciate all of your feedback on the the open house and Matt, you did do a really nice job with the. Open house and it was, I think we thought it was very well attended. We were a little worried after. Covid if people still knew how to come out and participate and they had not forgotten and they really wanted it, so. Look forward to more of those in the future.
I'll just again apologize for my my children. They were the ones that got the exercise balls and cups and made up a game. Glad that they didn't break anything or get hurt, but sorry about that. Tried my best.
That was great.
Exactly. That was my favorite part and I'm, it told me we need to have kid programming at our open houses. I loved it.
I was coming off the elevator, going going on to the elevator the other day and there's little. Loose stress balls on the top of the wood beams out in the foyer and it made me laugh remembering about the kids there, so. Without further ado, Aaron Holst and one B.
Thanks, Katrina. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today I'm here to talk to you a little bit about sports complex phase one B. I'll give a brief overview and I apologize if it's a little bit repetitive on some of the things Jeff touched on. Go over some schedule. And then also I will talk about transportation and transportation concurrency and then a little bit on stormwater as well, so. Guess we'll start off, Jeff, if you can pull up the the concept plan for phase one B. So on your screen here shortly, you should be able to see our concept plan for phase one B. As Jeff said previously, we're awarded an RCO grant for the sports complex phase one B for the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. The sports complex phase one B site is approximately three point four acres. It's directly north of the existing YMCA parking lot. The project includes six pickleball courts, bocce ball courts, restroom and concession stand building, a playground, an event lawn. And a performance stage. The project also includes a parking lot and an accessway that's directly adjacent to the YMCA parking lot. B C R A, the city's design consultant, was issued notice to proceed on the design for this project in April. And their surveyors arrived on site and became surveyed and soon thereafter. So I guess, Jeff, if you pull up the schedule, I'll talk a little bit to the schedule here. So we began collecting site survey immediately and. Concurrently with that, we're, our consultant is also beginning some of the land use permitting. And at the same time, we're also beginning engineering design, so. B C R A is scoped to provide a thirty, sixty, ninety and a bid ready submittal for for these. So we'll kind of have four important points for input on the design. And like I said previously, this will be happened concurrency with the land use applications. So under the land use applications, we'll be doing a major site plan, binding site plan, a tree survey. Along with any and all other required land use permits. Part of this process also is we'll be submitting SEPA for the project and our project team will fill out a SEPA checklist. That'll include details related to site impacts such as stormwater, traffic, lighting and other environmental impacts. And since I mentioned lighting, I wanted to bring up that for phase one B. What we're looking at for phase one B is I guess what I would consider just a low level pedestrian lighting for that. That will will be installed for phase one B. What you'll see for phase one A will be significantly different than what. You'll see proposed eventually for phase one B. So on this graphic here identifying the schedule, you'll see an open house that we anticipate being in June. But open house will be mostly informational. However, we will be requesting public input on various of design aspects of the project. For example, will be requesting input on playground equipment type and performance stage details. The second open house is identified currently for September, but that date may shift. Just depending on when it's most beneficial and how far along we are in design and permitting. We expect to go out to bid in early twenty three with the project spanning through the end of twenty twenty three. So that is all I have for the schedule and I guess I will hop over to concurrency. And kind of take questions at the end unless there were any questions now.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Aaron, you know kind of when the tree survey is gonna kick off? Have they done that yet?
Yeah, that that is ongoing and yeah, they've been called the survey they're collecting since they're out there. They're kind of doing all of it at the same time. So that is in the works.
You know when we're gonna get anything and papers saying X number of trees?
Not yet. I know I've spoke with B C R recently and they're making significant progress. But if you look at the schedule, the the survey is slated to last three months or so. So I think they they may be getting it done a little bit, a little bit sooner than anticipated, but it'll still, it's still probably a month or so out there.
Okay, and then on the public meetings, the input. I guess from what I've been hearing that there's a little bit more expectation than just playground equipment and the shape of the stage. Maybe not. Clearly, I know we can't alter the number and type of facilities, but perhaps the layout. Is that envisioned or is this gonna be limited to all you can do is tell us about the playground and the stage? Not about where we want to pick a ball courts or the bocce ball courts or whatever else.
Yeah. Are you, sorry, Jeff, were you gonna say something?
But yeah, I was just gonna say that if if council's desire is to open it. As much as what you're talking about, councilmember Henderson, to re-dot redesign the layout of the site, include the facilities. But redesign the layout of the site, then I don't, B C R A's contract isn't. Isn't set up to handle that much of work. And so we're going to have to talk to B C R A about having more meetings and more design funds to. Receive that kind of information. We did set up the scope that it would be the general concept and layout was approved. But can it be revised? Yes, it's just gonna cost us more money and time.
Yeah, and I I guess I will add to that. I I know some work went. What was involved early on in deciding where some of the elements of this project were placed and. And as you referred to, this this went through the RCO process and some of it is is changeable. But there's, there's always a process when you make a change through some of these grant agencies and that process takes time, so. This is a tight timeline we're trying to meet right now. So not that it can't happen, it would just take time and working with B C R A to get there.
Okay, just we, I think we need to be aware that there may be an expectation out there for something more than just type of playground equipment and whatnot. So something we'll have to deal with.
Councilmember Look.
Thank you. You mentioned that there were four inputs for design. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, four inputs for design?
At thirty percent at.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so we built into the consultant contract, we're getting a thirty, sixty, a ninety and a bid ready submittal package from them.
Only having one, we're only having two public hearings on this, right?
Yeah, well, let me clarify something. So the public input that we're going to receive isn't at thirty percent, sixty percent, ninety percent, one hundred percent. Those are opportunities for staff to review and provide comments back to the consultant. There are many, the maybe the first two steps, the thirty percent and sixty percent would be places where the public could provide input. Once you get past sixty percent, the site itself is established in the design. And what we're doing beyond that is talking about contracting documents. What do the specifications look like? What does the the actual contract language talk about? And that's not where we're going to ask for public input on those items.
So I'm looking at the timeline here and I noticed that there's a public. There's public input in June and in September. Where is, where do we anticipating being at sixty percent? For the design?
Yeah, so right above those, you'll see engineering design and like Jeff was referring to, we're we're trying to have the first one early on. So at about, I'll call it twenty percent. They're they're just getting going on it. So I'm hoping by the time we have this first open house will be at about twenty percent design. I'd say sixty percent design will probably fall somewhere in August, July or August.
Oh, okay. All right. So only two opportunities for public input.
There's only two, there's only two open houses that are for public input here. And yeah, as Jeff was referring to, those thirty, sixty, ninety, those are, those are for staff to provide feedback to our consultant. But those two open houses will will inform us on what the public's looking to see. And we can provide that feedback to our consultant at those two times.
Okay, and just to go over this again, the the first one in June is going to be at what percentage of design?
Hoping about, I'd call it about twenty.
And then at the September one, is that fifty percent design?
It'd be, you know, closer to eighty, but that one is definitely flexible. We 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 do like to have them early on. So it is, it's, if it was an eighty, ninety percent, as Jeff was referring to, it'd be only informational. But we're, we like to have them as soon as we can, so it's, so it can actually be incorporated into the design.
So then is the public input in in September at eighty percent is? Are you still able to make changes to design at that point?
No, and and that's why that one may slide. I'm hoping that one slides closer to August. It was just kind of put there as a placeholder, but it it could slide sooner on so that there it is more. It can have more impact on the design.
Okay, I think that's probably what I citizens would like to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Denton.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I missed a few minutes, so I hope I'm not saying something somebody already had. But councilmember Henderson mentioned because of the grant that we need to have these certain elements. But I know there's a lot of people in the community that are concerned about trees, people that want sports fields and don't want sports fields. Everybody would like to see as many trees as possible. So I'm wondering if in the design. Are we wedded to the kind of playground that we're seeing here or could we do more of a nature playground? That we've seen in some other communities where we're able to keep the trees and incorporate a playground that's, you know, kind of more nature focused. That might be a little bit, a little bit, and. I guess make a few more people happy about not having to take down all the trees in that middle area.
I'll speak to that one because when we were applying for the RCO grant. RCO was very clear about the surfacing for the playground area would need to be something. More than just natural chips. One of the ways that we scored higher and actually, in my opinion, received the grant that we did was because we changed that surfacing. In and around the playground area to be synthetic turf. If we remove the synthetic turf, which if we do anything that's natural, we could not put synthetic turf underneath a group of fir trees. That just wouldn't survive. Then we would need to change the surfacing to wood chips like we do have in a few other playground areas that are under trees. And then we would have to have the conversation with RCO if they still would consider that change. As something that would be valued. Would that we could continue to have the grant for. I know that if we change it, they're going to reduce our grant, if not take it away.
Yeah.
Realize that and we certainly want it to be as accessible as possible to to all children as well. Trying to think of some way we could compromise a little bit wherever we can.
Councilmember Denton and Jeff, thank you for bringing that up. The primary reason for the specific. Material under the playground equipment is to, as councilmember Denton just alluded to, to be available for all abilities. The city really does not have, besides the the playground equipment at Crescent Creek Park. We don't really have. Play equipment where everyone can play together regardless of your ability. And, you know, we as a city have a commitment in the pros plan as well as in the comprehensive plan to have. To have these playgrounds and different facilities that are available to our citizens of all abilities. And so that was part of the grant application and we do believe that's important. However, in discussing trees specifically, based on public comment and staff putting our heads together. We do have some ideas to potentially save trees that we'll discuss with you at the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Katrina. Councilmember Barber.
Yeah, I just wanted to raise that I'm a little concerned about some of the conversation that we're having. In that it seems to me that the council. Previously made some decisions about design that were presented to the council. And so as such, they were also presented to the public. I know they were presented at the Parks Commission and we saw them. We had experts who put these designs together and made their best recommendations to us. And I'm really concerned that we're trying to second guess them and we're trying to go back and reinvent the wheel. And I feel really strongly that we did the best designs that we could do and we need to move the project forward. And I want to save trees and that's why we have the conservation lands. I want to do the best things that we can possibly do, but I don't want to continually reinvent the wheel. And I would would just like to see this project move forward as quickly as we can and I. I think back to some of the letters, the emails that we got from people who said, my, my son was four years old. When he went to the original hearings for this project, I hope he doesn't have kids of his own by the time we finish these fields. And tho- those kinds of comments really stick with me and I think that it is incumbent on us as representatives of. The residents of Gig Harbor and the surrounding area to. We have a responsibility to move forward on something we've already agreed on.
Thank you, councilmember Barber. Councilmember Den Henderson.
Thank you. Aaron, I really want to emphasize that. That second opportunity for quote unquote public input. I I think it's pretty disingenuous if we're gonna have a sixty percent design. And then say we want input and then answer, oh, we're sixty percent designed, there's not much we can change right now. So we have a couple options. We can say, hey, let's just make this an informational thing. We're gonna tell you where we are and that's it. Have a good day. That way, nobody is going in there trying to say, hey, I I think I can do something or could we do this, just to be told, no, it's too late. It just, as an engineer myself, I never liked that. I mean, I understand engineering and I understand at sixty percent. It gets tough to change things because then you gotta re-scope your consultant and then your whole, a lot of stuff goes down the drain. So I'm just saying, we have to be very careful how we do this for the public. So they fully understand what the purpose of the meeting is and if we're so far into the design. That there's no opportunities for any. that there's no opportunities for any changes, then let's be honest upfront and say, hey, this is informational only. We're far enough in the design, we can't change anything. Here's all our neat photos, here's our three D stuff, everything else. The first meeting at, at twenty percent, you could probably take more input. But I, you know, this whole project has a lot of emotions behind it, and there's a lot of people that feel like things are being pulled over their, you know, pulled over their head. And I just want to make sure that you guys in the city, because you're going to take a flak for this. I just want us to cover ourselves and make sure that people know what they're going to be doing and what's expected and what they can do. So that second one, let's be real careful. You ought to slide it forward so that you can take input. If it's too late and we're far enough in the design, just say it's informational only. I just, I'm begging you for that. I just, I don't want to have to answer questions about, well, like, you know, I was at the meeting and I tried to do something and I was told it's too, too late, and this is supposed to be input? Come on. I know we can do that. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. We are well aware of the public civic engagement spectrum and that spans from information all the way to engagement. And I would say that the original master planning process in twenty seventeen and eighteen was on the engagement. The, the full buy-in portion of that. We were asking people, what do you want? And that was the time when we talked about programmatic elements of what we want. And from those decisions, we went and applied for grants for those elements. And, you know, received grant or went, got contracts, for instance, with the YMCA. So you're correct. In terms of one A and one B, as Jeff explained, we do have obligations for general elements in order to keep our contractual agreements and our funding structure. And so we will make sure that we're very clear on, to the public about if this is informational, if there is an opportunity for input, you know, what that is, so that there's no confusion. But I would say on the overall sports complex, and we'll get to this at the very end, there is still true engagement opportunities on phase two and phase three. And, you know, what we're hoping to do as a city with the assistance of our communication team is break out, you know, this portion of the sports complex that is obligated and moving forward versus the rest of it being one C, two and three, which we are not legally, contractually obligated to perform. And so we will be working diligently to ensure that our, our messaging is accurate and transparent to the citizens, and you can expect that we will do that.
I appreciate that, and I just wanted to go easy. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Barber, you said it really, really well. So I don't want to reiterate everything that, that she said, but, you know, I know we're, for some of it, you know, for most of us, we're new to city council. Some of us may have had, you know, more history on this in the past, but there is an expectation and there's, you know, a perception, you know, that goes along with this. It is, I see it as more informative, picking it back up, and let's, let's keep moving. I do want there to be opportunities. I think it's more, you know, for the public to comment, make suggestions. We have to look at what's reasonable, though, and not, not delay this project any further. You know, I remember being at the city council when, gosh, I can't remember what year it was. I could go back and look at the timeline. But I had those same thoughts of, I want my kids to be able to play on these fields. And, you know, I think, I think I had one at that point, knowing that it would be down the line. But I remember the voting and what people were asking for, and how many people were there? I mean, I was blown away. I thought, oh, maybe there'll be twenty people, and there's like, I would guess there was like three hundred. So, so anyways, I really want to see this go forward. I, I think, you know, I think the community is really going to show up on this one, even with that first open house. When this, you know, future decisions come up for, for council, there is going to be a lot of pressure on this. So I, I do think that the staff is taking proper steps and doing their due diligence. And it's part of our responsibility to help educate people on, on where we're at and why we're doing this. So thank you for giving so much of the, the back history.
Councilmember Starset, just to further that, when we're looking at the sports complexes Jeff described in the different phases, phase one B is a direct result of a public engagement process. The sports groups wanted, where phase one B is, to be an additional field. And it is because of the residents that showed up and said, wait a second, there's going to be these fields, that's fine. But where are the amenities for the rest of us? And so that is really where the event lawn, the playground, the bocce ball, the pickleball, that phase one B really is a, a result of the public engagement process.
Councilmember Lichens.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the appreciation for staff and for putting the time in to explain this. I, with phase one B, I mean, I'd really like to see this going forward. And I'm concerned when I hear about changes and the effects that that would have, that Jeff talked about for cost and staff time. I know we are very stretched thin, particularly within public works and engineering. And that concerns me. It concerns me, Katrina addressed the accessibility issue of having a playground where all can play. I think that's really important. And I'm really looking forward to hearing the staff idea. It sounds like Katrina mentioned you're going to later in the, the presentation, talk about what ideas you have. Because maybe we can adjust as we go forward, but I do think we need to go forward. So, thanks.
Okay, there's no other questions. That's actually where we're going to step into next.
Does Erin, does Erin have anything else on one B?
Yeah. I'm prepared to talk about transportation concurrency here for a bit. Just, there has been a lot of questions about traffic, so I can kind of, I can kind of go into this in general here. But it's definitely applicable to this project. So I'll just talk briefly about how transportation concurrency is analyzed. It begins at the land use process, during the land use process for each project. The project is required to prepare a TIA, and that TIA is submitted to city staff. It identifies many.
Traffic impact assessment?
Traffic impact analysis. But that TIA identifies many things, many of which is how many PMP hour trips the project is predicted to, to create. Once the city concurs with those number of PMP hour trips identified in the TIA, the applicant pays a consultant deposit, and the city runs those trips through our concurrency model. That concurrency model is managed by David Evans and Associates or DEA, and the model is continuously updated. Anytime a, a project is generating new trips, those trips are ran through our model before that project is issued land use permit. So our concurrency model looks at PMP power trips. That's the, the heaviest hour of traffic in any given location between four and six PM. And what the model is looking at when we put a particular project through that model, it's looking to see that that project isn't tripping the level of service beyond the standards that we've adopted as a city at any intersections throughout the city. So our level of service that we've adopted at, at most intersections is D or better. And it's, it is, those trips are input into the model, and it, it tells you immediately if there is a failure at any given intersection within city limits. So I guess that's generally how concurrency works. But for phase, I'll speak to phase one A and one B a little bit. So those two sites have two hundred and eighty-seven PMP hour trips reserved in our concurrency model. And I don't expect, I've taken a brief look at what the impact of two sports fields and a, and a smaller parcel such as the sports complex phase one B are going to generate. And I, I, I do not expect these two parcels, phase one A and phase one E, B, to generate anywhere near that two hundred and eighty-seven trips that are approved and are living in our model currently. So I expect that we will create this TIA. BCR is going to create this traffic impact analysis for us for the sports complex phase one B. And I, I don't expect that even with the combination of phase one A to come anywhere near what is already living in our model. Another point that's worth making is that a sports complex or sports fields are, are a pretty unique trip generator. A lot of the trips they generate are outside of the PMP, the weekday PMP hour, which is, it is beneficial to us as a city. It's desirable to have various land uses that generate trips. For example, a sports complex fields, you're going to see a lot of trips on the, on the weekends where we're not having that heavy evening peak traffic like we see on weekdays between four and six PM. So that is one, one benefit of this type of a project in this location. And that is really all I had to say about concurrency, and I could take questions about that if there are any.
I just wanted to add a little bit to what Erin was saying. I know that there's been some questions, concerns brought up from the neighborhoods around the sports complex about capacity and traffic where it sits today. I just want to remind council that the traffic impacts from those new neighborhoods were assessed with this commercial plat already in the pipeline. So, a- and, and so we have kept the concurrency that those pipeline trips sitting there every time we run the model. And just because there's congestion doesn't mean we're at capacity. We don't build roads to be free-flowing at all times. And I'm not going to get into a deep discussion of what concurrency means and capacity, because that's totally different subject. But I can tell you that the way we treat capacity concurrency, whether it's traffic, whether it's water, whether it's sewer, is based at capacity, not at congestion levels. So just, I want that to be something that we, that if you want to talk about at a later time, happy to do that. But let's just be careful that if we see congestion, that doesn't mean that we're, we're limited, we're done, we can't build anymore.
And the two hundred and eighty-seven trips Jeff and Erin that are currently reserved with us are for the existing zoning of the high-level commercial business development when this business subdivision was going to occur. So we, as Erin said, we anticipate those trips to be less than half of the two hundred and eighty-seven reserved trips for the sports fields.
And just as a reference, like, I'm guarantee you, the sewer will be much less than half what's reserved for this site, and so will the water. I guess, was it questions, Councilmember Henderson?
Thanks. How do we, does the model take into account the practices that are going to be going on during the week? Because obviously, we've heard that there's a huge demand for practices, which just don't happen on weekends. We can expect games on weekends, but practices probably after school, which is that three to, depending on the time of the year, three to six PM, three to seven PM, which is kind of rush hour. Is that being looked at in the model, or is it just, is, maybe amplify that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. And there, there are many different ways that would be identified within the TIA that is one A would submit if there were practices going on for phase one A. And there, there are lots of different ways to look at it. One way to look at it is we've adopted what's called the ITE manual, eleventh edition currently is what we're using. It's the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It has hundreds and actually thousands of land use codes in it, and they've done studies nationwide. And lots of studies, and you can essentially go into land use, for example, a sports complex or sports fields and plug in how many fields are going to be present in it. It'll tell you pretty accurately, most of the time, how many trips are predicted to be generated for that site. So that is one method. Another method might be when we get to phase one A, doing this analysis, is that they could look at, if, if they knew detailed information for what teams would be playing on this field, what times those games might be, what times the practices would be. Another option is to, to look at that, and, and sometimes we'll look at a multiple, we'll look at multiple different things within the TIA. So those are a couple of different ways that we could look at phase one A when they're developing the TIA for that site. If that, if that answers your question.
Yeah, is the consultant scoped for a detailed one like that, or are they just going to go to the ITE manual and look up the right thing under the right column?
For phase one B, I think we'll, we'll try and look at it a couple of different ways. But the ITV is always good to use just kind of as a, a starting point. And sometimes you look at it and say, yeah, that's, that seems very accurate, that's reasonable, and you don't have to go any further. But I think, because this is kind of a specified use, we'll try and look at this in a couple of different ways.
And again, I don't think I'd expect a lot of traffic out of phase one, one B. Phase one B is really not much of an issue. Most people support it. We all support it. Phase one A is the one, and I think we just have to look carefully at, as we're moving along. Thanks.
Councilmember Look. You're on mute, Councilmember.
As we look at the traffic, two hundred and eighty-seven trips for this subdivision, is this a cumulative total of the village, the school, the church, and the Y, and this, and this, and, and phase one A and B together?
That is just the trips that are reserved in our model for, I believe they called it lot one with Harbor Hill Development. But it is just the phase one A and phase one B parcels.
So, so we're not considering any of the traffic around the village?
Those are also reserved in our model, but yeah, those were reserved under separate processes. So yeah, the village at Harbor Hill, for example, already has concurrency trips reserved within our model, because they went through a land use process with us.
And so does this church and art center. That already has trips reserved in the model.
In the same model? And, and so how about the school and the Y?
Yes, everything that was platted has trips reserved.
Okay, and, and that is included, and that would all add up to two hundred and eighty-seven trips?
Just, this, just the sports complex, phase one A and one B will, or we have those two hundred and eighty-seven trips reserved for.
So can you explain this to me then, how, how, I, I didn't understand when you said these, the village and the school and the church all have the trips reserved, but they're really not reserved? What, what is this?
Let, let me take a try at this. Councilmember Look, what, what Erin's saying is that all of these parcels that were created through the commercial subdivision had trips reserved for it. The number of trips reserved for it, I can't tell you, except for we can tell you that the number of trips reserved for phase one, one A, one B, is two hundred and eighty-seven PMP hour trips. There's another set of trips already reserved in the pipeline for the village. There has been trips reserved for the school. There is trips reserved for the art center and the church. So all of them have had, that are not developed, still have those trips reserved in our concurrency model.
And the Y?
The Y is active, so we don't reserve the trips anymore now that the traffic is actually flowing to and from the Y.
And we don't take into consideration?
We do, because we take traffic counts. Now, remember, everyone, every so often, we take traffic counts, and those traffic counts are background data to show what the existing trips actually are. And then it's just like water and sewer concurrency. We have intersection capacity is the maximum capacity we can have. And then you fill that up. To get to the top, you fill it up with, here's how much trips are flowing, here's how many trips are moving. And then you have how many trips are reserved in your pipeline, and then there's a delta between that total and the total capacity. And that's how much more capacity you have in your system for additional trips.
Okay, I, I'm not sure I totally understand, but, but I don't disagree. I just have a hard time understanding, because that's a lot of traffic up there by the Y. And so I think that's going to be, and I guess you think that this is not going to be a level of service below a D at any point then, right?
Correct, and I guess what's important to point out is, I guess, that these trips build upon each other. So all, all these lots that we're looking at here, including the YMCA, have trips reserved in our model. And as developments come in, whether it's these specific parcels that we're looking at or surrounding subdivisions, these all live in our model, and they're building upon each other as they come in. So a- after doing that, that, you're correct, there is no level of service failure that has been triggered or is anticipated to be triggered with the sports complex phase one A or B.
The last time we had a development in Gig Harbor North area have traffic. have traffic exceed the capacity of an intersection with St. Anthony's Hospital. They had to do, as you may know, millions of dollars of improvements to the interchange with Highway 16 to gain concurrency. So that's the kind of level of trips we're talking about before you often have to trip or exceed capacity concurrency.
All right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks. So I, trying to help Jenny out a little bit here too. If you were to look at that map and see all the things that haven't been built and they've got their certain number of PMPs associated with it. So say the village has, I'm just going to pick numbers out of the air. I know these aren't official. 500 and then the Peninsula School District lots each have 300 each. And the church has another several hundred and then we've got 287. When you do the traffic model, are you just looking at the, the, I think Jenny wants to know, if you do the traffic model, are you including all the other traffic that's going to be there that, I mean, is and will be as part of this sports complex and also the stuff from the school, the church and everything else? Or are you just looking at, okay, we have 287 PMPs for this phase one A, phase one B. We'll do a traffic model to see that that 287 isn't exceeded. But we're not going to care about anything else.
The two, the 287 are the only trips that are inputted into the model. The rest of the trips already live within the model. So with the 287 assumptions are actually made by the model. For example, what direction are, are these trips going to go? What percentage? For example, what percentage of vehicles will take a left and head up towards Oregon? What percentage of vehicles will take a right and head down towards Harbor Hill Drive Extension? But yeah, those, the 287 trips, if we're talking phase one A and B, those are the trips that are input into the model. The rest of the trips for any site that has land use approval already, already live within the model.
So when you say they live within the model, they, they are, the, the model is assuming that those things are built and they're generating traffic. So then we are actually looking at a cumulative effect, not just, hey, we don't care about anything else. Let's look and see if this thing triggers our level of service degradation. So I, Jenny, I, I think what I'm hearing is this is a cumulative impact that we're looking at. So this is being added on to all the other stuff that's now built and stuff that's going to be built based on this land use designation. Is that a correct statement?
Exactly.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, may I suggest that we take a five minute break and then come back and wrap up? Yes. Thank you very much. We will adjourn and return at 3:40.
Thank you.
And Josh. Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of 30th May 26, 2022. The time is 3:42 PM and we are continuing on in our discussion of the Gig Harbor Sports Complex. And I will turn it back over to Katrina Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the discussion so far. Our interim city engineer, Erin Holst, would like to just briefly describe some of the stormwater considerations that we received public comments on. And then if it's acceptable to council, we'll move on to next steps and get some, get moving on so we can get to our fireworks discussion after this. Councilmember Denton, you have a question before we start?
Yeah, just real quick, before we move on to the next segment, I know there was a question from some constituents about the extent of the environmental study. So if you could just describe what's going to happen with that, that would be helpful. And then the other thing that I heard was a question about whether we could change the name or the classification of the sports complex from regional to community. So instead of calling it a regional sports complex, we could just call it the Gig Harbor Sports Complex or Community Sports Complex. Thank you.
Jeff, feel free to jump in on the, the cost associated with this. And council here, I will caution us as well that we're talking about specific phases of the overall sports complex, where I think some of the community and their comments to us are considering the entirety of the sports complex and including phase two and three in this, which at this point the city has not decided to undertake. And so from environmental perspective, councilmember Denton, phase one B and one A will undergo a SEPA process that will require an environmental analysis to look at traffic, stormwater, tree retention, noise, lighting, glare, smells, wildlife, et cetera. And both of those projects will undergo that through the state prescribed SEPA process. One, essentially when that begins from a regulatory perspective is when we receive our SEPA checklists from the project proponents in this one B, it would be the city, phase one A, it would be the YMCA. Although I know that Jeff and his team are with BCR working on the environmental documentation to provide to us for that SEPA checklist. So essentially from there, and I'm not sure how much they cost, maybe Jeff, you can discuss what the cost is for one B. I would anticipate the cost of that preparation be more for one A, since it will have the, the turf, the lighting, as well as the wetlands that we know is to the north of those fields between the fields and Costco. But councilmember Denton, there will be a former reg, formal regulatory process, SEPA process that will have a comment period as well as an appeal period to any threshold determination made by the city.
Thank you.
And then lastly, to talk about the name, we can talk about that, I think, in a wrap up discussion.
Okay. I will speak to stormwater a little, little bit here. Jeff covered a lot of it. If we could maybe pull up that, do we have that map available again with all the parcels on it and the stormwater pond on it? So as Jeff pointed out, the Harbor Hill Maintenance Associated Number One Parcel is the stormwater pond for, for a lot of these sites. And it is the stormwater pond that was designed to take the stormwater from phase one B of the sports complex and phase one A of the sports complex. In fact, there's already infrastructure in the ground that we're hoping to be, to be able to utilize. There's stormwater manholes and there's a, a truck line that runs north and south down the, down the west side of these parcels that we're hoping to be able to take advantage of. So, but that being said, this is all obviously designed under an old manual. But our intent for phase one B and what BCR is scoped to do is to try and incorporate low impact development or LID into our project wherever possible. So what that can incorporate sometimes is, is bio retention, pervious concrete, porous asphalt, filter tree boxes, modular wetlands, things like that. So they are scoped to take a look at that. So we intend to do more than what is required for the manual. And we do intend to look at maintaining native vegetation also wherever possible with this project. And, and that's, that's really all I had to say about the stormwater part here.
Thank you, Erin.
Thanks, Erin and, and Mayor. This has been, and council, this has been quite a long overview of obligations, public outreach, some of the more specific permitting requirements. We hope that this has provided you with a lot of answers to the questions that you've had. And we're hoping that the community that watches this as well can have those answers. And as Matt mentioned, we're looking to put out an FAQ on our website about some of the more common questions. So you know, with increased public communication and information to inform our community about phase one A and one B. From what we've heard from council today, as well as previous votes from council regarding the sports complex, I've heard, we've heard from at least three councilmembers today that we wish to continue pursuing phase one A and one B, as has been previously described and in the council agreement with BCR for professional services. So it sounds that that's what council still wishes to do with the information from councilmember Henderson to move up that potential public outreach from 70, 60, 70% design up closer and let the public know exactly what we, what it is that we're seeking from them, if it's informational or, or whatnot, and we can definitely commit to that. So the outcome, at least for one A and one B, that we're hearing from council is proceeding as, as planned. With that being said, the public outreach did give us a number of really interesting considerations that some of the things that, I guess you call it thinking outside the box, which is what public input is great for, in particular on future phases that we do not yet have obligations or commitments to. And so some of those things that we've talked about from staff, on a staff level, we wanted to briefly mention to council today, our one C project, I don't know, Jeff, if you can pull up where phase one C is. But essentially that spans the McCormick Creek neighborhood between the YMCA parking lot at the very end of phase one B. We've heard from citizens that they want to preserve additional trees wherever necessary, wherever we can. And so a thought that we had as staff was potentially, and again, this would take agreement from the school district, but something that we could consider is a potential elimination of phase one C. If we were able to get a shared parking agreement with Swift Water Elementary School across the street, we know that they have a vacant parking lot on the weekends that is sitting there that's already cleared and paved and has parking. And so we've had initial discussions with the mayor as well about potentially reaching out to the school district to get that shared parking agreement. And if we're able to do that with parking counts, we may be able to eliminate the removal of all of those trees necessary for phase one C. That would not only save the tree canopy for purposes of climate change, but also reduce the amount of impervious surface there and also provide additional buffer for the McCormick Creek neighborhood. So that is something that staff would like to pursue that could modify the end game of the previously approved master plan. Additionally, the, we heard from the public outreach, from the, specifically from Little League families, that they're concerned that we haven't moved forward at all with, with phase two as of yet. And so what we would like to propose that council could direct staff to do would be to include a phase, a sports complex phase two feasibility study into the 2023, 2024 budget that would look at existing conditions and look at costs, environmental concerns, or considerations rather, for phase two and provide an approximate cost estimate. We think that this would provide council with really great information for considering moving forward with phase two. Additionally, we, in looking at phase three, we did hear from especially the petition, but also some other community members that they would like us to consider partnering with either Penn Met or the school district for turfing of their fields. And if there's any way that we could save, let me say this a different way, retain phase three in its current condition with the trees. And so that is something we also wanted to bring up to council for consideration for placement into the 2023, 2024 budget would be public outreach regarding phase three and in particular coordination with Penn Met Parks, as well as the Peninsula School District to see if we can have a partnership of turfing the fields that the school district already has that are just not turfed and are therefore not available during certain parts of the year, similar to how our Little League fields are same, similar condition. So those are some of the ideas that we have. Again, we would like to get council concurrence to approach the school district for a shared use parking agreement for phases one A and one B that would allow us to retain those trees for various reasons where phase one C currently is. For further public outreach considerations with the master plan, we would also note to council that they could put in the 2023 budget, not only a feasibility study for phase two and potentially council could add in as well a public outreach and consideration component to phase three of the sports complex. And so those are the ideas that we have. Matt, Jeff and Erin, if I have missed any of our other great ideas that were spurred by public comment, feel free to jump in. Okay. And yes, there's lots of hands. We're happy to answer any questions. Councilmember Storset. And you're on mute.
I think I must have been unmuted and muted myself. So I have a few things. So I want to, I know the, the master plan isn't a, you know, and we haven't taken all the steps along the way. If actually, if you could leave the map up still, that would be great. I just want to be able to speak to a couple of the spots. So I think this is, I think this is a beautiful design and we talk about a sports complex. And I think of, you know, say phase three, you know, not coming to fruition. Or, you know, the, the, you know, not necessarily delay, but the, the length of time it's going to take to develop the baseball fields into multipurpose. There's a need for a field like this when you think of tournaments for different sporting teams and be able to host those type of things. That if you're limited to just a couple of fields, it's not going to happen. You know, like we heard from Harbor Soccer Club when we were at the YMCA of how many different fields they're utilizing and spreading people out. And so even on the, the parking piece, and don't get me wrong, I love trees. And I think, I think the city of Gig Harbor has done a good job, even creating, you know, the green belts that separate things. Like over in the McCormick Creek area near the parking, looks in that image like there's a, you know, a substantial amount of trees still there. Of course, we would have to take some down. The parking concern that I would have of, of using the school, which I think, you know, at times, you know, for overflow could be great. But that is putting a lot more people at sidewalks and the crosswalks, which will add to, you know, congestion. If we, you know, if we have a lot of people crossing the road, it adds safety concerns. Additionally, I think on the, the Penn Met parks and the public schools, for them to look at this type of, you know, multipurpose fields, all season, lit fields, I think that's, that's great. But you know, I look at our schools, I want them to focus on schools, not sporting fields. I think this is something that, you know, the Penn Met parks and the city can definitely help with. I love the partnership we have with the YMCA. I love hearing the potential for the baseball fields. And I imagine we can find somebody else for phase three. So I'll leave it at that. I know there's a lot of hands and we've got to move on. So thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm totally in favor of talking with the schools and see if we can work something out for parking and see if we can work something out for their field as well. And in the meantime, I've had a discussion with Tacoma Tree Foundation, Lowell Wise. And this is a group that helps, that goes into public entities like the city of Gig Harbor and would help install or install for free a nature trail through phase, what is now phase three. And since we're not going to be doing anything in phase three for, I think it's on the, on the roof for 10 years, we could put actually a nature trail in here. It costs the city nothing, a very small amount. And then we could also, and that would also meet our pros plan because 90s, what, the folks who replied to our pros plan, 91% of them said that the major thing they wanted to see in Gig Harbor were more soft trails. So, so this is something that I'd like to continue to talk about with Tacoma Tree Foundation with Lowell. And they can do this for us and it allows the public then to get into here. It's a natural trail, probably on the semili sorter to Soundview Forest Park. And, and it would allow it to remain natural unless, unless maybe there's someone comes along for phase three. But in the meantime, the public could be able to go in there and to use it and it would meet the pros plan. So I'm, I'm hoping that if our citizens, if the council would like me to continue with it. I know I talked with the mayor about that today and she was interested in it. So I'll probably be reaching out to Tacoma Tree Foundation to get some more information on, on how we can best keep this natural, keep the trees and then meet the desire of our public for natural trails. So I am in favor of the pin of reaching out to schools and for parking and the field. You betcha. Thank you. So I am in favor of the pin of reaching out to schools and for parking and the field. You betcha. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Henderson.
I want to thank you for thinking out of the box. I think that's super. I really support the phase one C. Maybe working with the school, Swiftwater to see if we can use additional parking. You know, we, we build so much parking, we tend to overbuild our parking. You know, every time I drive around here, I see lots that are empty and they're parking lots. So whatever we can do to, you know, parking sharing or whatever it is, I think is a great idea. I do want to preserve those trees. I mean, that this, the, the graphic shown here may not show all the trees or it may show far less. So I, I don't usually trust graphics too much. Phase two Little League, I'd like to know more about it. That area is already deforested anyway. So, you know, changing that into something else, I think would be a great thing and get the Little League folks back on the fields again. And the phase three partnering, I, I would love that. I you know, this whole area up in North Gig Harbor is gonna turn into a deforested area just for the stuff we've got planned. If we can do something else, I think this is super. So you got my support on these three.
Thank you, council. If there are no other comments, I think it is prudent for us to move on with our agenda, but just to go over it sound, what the agreement, what we have from today. We do, I did see concurrence from at least three council members, if not four, to move forward with as planned with phase one A and one B. And as Jeff and Erin said, they will provide regular updates to council on that. And we will definitely work on communicating that out to the public. As for the phase two potential feasibility study and phase three, we will plan to come back and talk with council more about that. At a future date, it sounds like more information is needed. So we will consider that and and bring that back. And then in the meantime, without saying that we for sure want to partner with the school district, we, I will at least reach out to superintendent and have a discussion about if that's even something they would be willing to do. And then we can report that back when we bring this back to council to discuss phase two and phase three. Does that sound agreeable to everyone? Excellent. And I really want to thank Erin and Matt and Jeff for their time and preparation for today's work session. It's a lot of information to get into this amount of time. So really, thank you so much. And mayor, back to you.
Okay, thank you to all, including you, Katrina, as well for all of your hard work. Appreciate all of you so much. And we will now welcome Paul Rice, our building official and fire marshal, to lead us into our next discussion item regarding fireworks code amendments. So take it away, Paul.
Thank you, mayor. And, and council, good afternoon. This next agenda item is a bit of a follow-up to our previous March thirty-first study session where staff discussed possible amendments to Gigger River Civil Code, chapter eight twenty, which is our fireworks ordinance with council. The amendments proposed would grant authority to the city fire marshal to prohibit the discharge of fireworks on emergency basis, depending on climate conditions. And at that meeting, direction was provided to staff to proceed in drafting an amendment to be brought to the full council for consideration. Council also directed staff to discuss adoption and effective date timelines for such an amendment with the city attorney. And then after discussing this with the city attorney, it became clear that several legal considerations required discussion with the city council prior to moving the proposed amendment to a regular council meeting. I believe our city attorney is here to discuss these considerations with the council in an executive session. Following executive session, staff then seeks council direction on how they wish to proceed.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, so we will now go into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss potential litigation per RCW four-two dot three zero dot one one zero parentheses I. No action will be taken following the executive session. So council, you should have received a link from City Clerk Stecker and also Chief Busey, Katrina Knudson, Paul Rice, and Daniel Kenny will also be invited to the executive session. So let's adjourn now to executive session. We will return approximately four twenty-five PM. Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. We have reserved return from executive session. The time is four twenty-six PM. We are continuing our discussion on fireworks code amendments. And I see that councilmember Woo has a question, so I will let her ask that.
Thank you. One moment, I believe council, oh, no, tell me just promoted her. I saw her in the waiting room. I just wanted to make sure.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, councilmember Woo.
Thank you. Josh, do we know if, if we were to ban fireworks, is it affect, is it can be, is it affected by initiatives and referendums?
I would defer to Daniel Kenny on this one, but I'm pretty sure that it is. But because we have the one-year waiting period, then that would it would fall within that one-year wait period if I remember correctly.
So, so we could ban this, not put any of our citizens' money in jeopardy and, and be, listen to what our citizens have asked us to do, which is to ban it. And then if our citizens are not happy with this, they could have a referendum and come back to the council and say, whoa, we don't like this. So I, I'm in favor of going that path. It protects our citizens' financial interest in the city. It protects their money. And it protects our environment and the safety of our buildings and our citizens. So that, that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, did you have anything further in terms of explanations or any remainder of your report that you wanted to conclude before we open it up for additional council comments?
No, the, the main, you know, the main reason that we're having this follow-up is just to provide some, to get some additional direction from council. I know there's been a number of number of proposals that have kind of gone throughout the council and after our, our executive session, after you consider those the issues that came up, we just need, need some direction. So that's pretty much it.
Okay. And before I call on councilmembers, Chief Busey, or is there anything else that you wanted to add as part of this discussion?
Unnecessarily. The direction the conversation is going. Let me just throw this out there so you can factor it into your ongoing discussion though. And, and as it applies to this coming year, when we limit the use of fireworks to just July fourth, as we move forward, if there was a ban or if there was a, a fire marshal sort of ordinance involved, I would just alert you that there would be a flurry of citizen complaints that would largely be unrealistic to address for the first year or two or three while we go through the education process and get everybody on board. We respond to every call, every fireworks call. We average somewhere around three a year. I think we've been as high as seven. Paul, maybe you can correct me on that, but we don't get a lot of complaints. I would expect that to be an enormous number in the first year, this year coming up of people wanting a hundred percent enforcement on July third. That's coming. We'll respond as best we can. We're not gonna get all of them. And there will be very little enforcement. We, we like to do the education process on that first. So as you consider other alternative ordinances, just be realized, realize that comes with the territory too.
Okay, great. Thank you, chief. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm thinking that there's some benefits in a, a full ban versus other issues or trying to restrict certain kinds of fireworks. That becomes a, that would become a, an enforcement nightmare. If it's just clean, it says they're banned within the city limits and that's our only jurisdiction, of course. So you could argue, I walk across peacock and shoot off all I want. Got it. But I, I think we've heard recently fairly strongly from a lot of citizens that are in favor of a, of an outright ban. I, again, I think from an enforcement point of view, that's easier. And we would have a year to get people ready for it. We'd have to, the city would have to do quite a bit of education and making people aware of that. Some of this is gonna fall on chief and his, and his, and his folks, but I, I think over time that would go away. And that as things get hotter, drier, they just become more dangerous. And we only need one fire here that could destroy a lot of stuff. And I think this, the other thing I'd like to see the city maybe think about is ponder is with a, a full ban, we would need to, or it would be great if we could replace the Fourth of July festivity with something down in the harbor that isn't a fireworks display. But I believe, mayor, you had mentioned that there were laser light shows that could be neat to bring people together down in the harbor. I think that would be a pretty neat thing. Wouldn't be fireworks, but I, I think that would be a wonderful thing. So that's just my two cents worth.
Thank you, councilmember Liggins.
Yes, I wondered if staff or councilmember Denson or Woo could summarize that when this came before council last year, what the overall sentiment, like how many comments did you get one way or another, or just the general consensus that helped them make their decision?
I think Paul, Paul, didn't you keep track of all that? Do you have that handy?
I, I don't have the statistics. It was extremely weighted on the banning the fireworks side. I mean, probably nine to one. I think we had a couple of the folks that ran stands that had called in opposing the changes, but the vast, vast, vast majority of the people that, that provided testimony supported the changing of the ordinance down to just the one day. There is, there is something else that I, I had checked on before the meeting. Typically, every year we have anywhere between, I don't know, half dozen, six to ten fireworks stands permitted throughout the city. So far this year, we've only had one application. Now, there's still three or four more days left. They have until June first to, to make those applications. But so unless we get, you know, a bunch of people coming in at the last minute, I think maybe the, the, the tides may have shifted a bit
Yeah.
in our community, you know, towards the towards the, well, especially since we have, as you've mentioned over and over again, since we have had the really dry, the dry summers, I think everybody's trying to be a little bit more responsible, including those, you know, the nonprofits and even the people that are having their for-profit stands, because we just haven't gotten the applications this year. My only concern with that is that hoping that our citizens won't, you know, head out to the, to the reservations to find their, their fireworks this year. That, that's definitely not something that we, we want to happen necessarily. So just wanted to, to kind of bring that up as well.
Okay, great. That's really helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Storset.
Yes, thank you. Interesting conversation. I think it, you know, the, the risk and everything involved is, is important. I think, you know, we have to look at these things. I would, I have to say, I would not support a full ban of fireworks. I do think that there is some emergency, you know, if we are in a drought and if we're in a, a higher possibility of, you know, fires happening. I think, you know, we do that the same as banning a campfire, right? And so I do think it's, you know, there's a education involved. I imagine it's gonna be a, a busy couple of days for, you know, fire department and police responding to complaints. Even with just, you know, limiting it to for the July. You know, I think back on the, my childhood and growing up and fireworks and, you know, it's a, it's somewhat of a pastime. It's a, it's patriotic. And I would hate, hate to see it go away entirely. So that's my, my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Barber.
I'm kind of torn on this too, and I I'm really concerned about fire danger. I'm really concerned about the possibility of a fire. I also wish that we could get a better sense of what the public as a whole wants to do. Because I think that the people who we've heard from, as always happens on an issue like this, are very strongly one way or in this case, they're very strongly one way because they care. Regardless of what we decide to do, I think that we need to have a very strong education campaign leading up to the fourth and also after the fourth, even not just about fireworks, but about fire danger, about the firewise program, about things you can do to protect your home and things that you can do to protect your neighbors, those kinds of things. I am really emphatic about that. There was that house that burned down in Anchorage last week. I don't know if you've read this, Paul, you can go on the Anchorage Daily News and read about it. Ten homes were evacuated because this person heard the fire alarm go off and went outside. Nothing to do with fireworks, just had to do with the fact it was dry out. The winds prevailed in the correct way and my three friends who live in the neighborhood, their homes are safe. It was just one home that burned down, but we need to be protecting people against the fire danger because it's dry. And I think we need to look at what the problem is we're trying to solve and the, the problem we're solving is fire danger. And the problem we're solving has to do with the danger of our city burning down. And that's a little bit different than fireworks. We are looking at fireworks also, but the bigger problem is fire danger.
Thank you, councilmember Woo.
Thank you. So when the Department of Natural Resources passed their climate sustainability plan, they said that we have to figure out a way to keep this from happening from human, for keep humans from starting fires. And one of the ways we can do this is to eliminate fireworks. Last year, when we went from four days to one day, our public was reached out to by the city, by all of us who were on the city council. And, and overwhelmingly, the public wanted to have reduced fireworks. That was what they spoke about. As a matter of fact, if you go back to those and listen to those meetings, you'll find that basically the only people who spoke in favor of fireworks were those folks making money from it. There were six companies last year that had fireworks stands. I believe two of them involved nonprofits. Wouldn't it be nice if our nonprofit sold something that was not a danger to those people suffering with PTSD? Or as we listen to the chief of fire, fire chief, his, his, his concern, the thing that keeps him up at night is not putting out the fire, it's getting, making sure we're all evacuated. And you know, if there's anything, anything that we can do to not have that happen, why wouldn't we want to do that? And the drier we get, you know, fireworks is not a necessary thing. Let's find another way, a safer way. We have a whole year to find another way, in a safer way, to celebrate that day without setting off fireworks that go on the tops of dry trees. I think we owe that to our citizens. I, I'd like to see us to direct staff to come up with a plan, to come back to the city council at the next council meeting with an ordinance that would in fact ban fireworks beginning in twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Jenny, you said exactly what I was gonna say, and I, I would like to give that same guidance to our city staff to come back.
Councilmember Denson.
Yeah, and I'll just remind everybody that we're not making a decision today. We're not having final arguments today. It'll come before city council two times. And we want to hear what the public has to say. So I think we should do outreach again to the public and I am so sorry, Paul, but it would be great if you could keep track, or somebody could keep track of, of the general sentiment. And that would help us all make the decision that, that we know the community is gonna support.
Sure, no problem.
Councilmember Liggins.
Yes, I agree with what Robin said. I would definitely like to potentially see it come forward, give the public a chance to, you know, let their voices be heard again on an outright ban. And then we can make the decision then. So I'd be open to that.
Okay, so the direction I'm hearing from council is not to move forward with the, with an emergency ban from the fire marshal. from the fire marshal, building inspector, but to go forward with an ordinance, prepare an ordinance to come before council for an outright ban. So is that my understanding from council? Okay, I'm seeing majority heads, I think, well, I'm seeing three. Three, I think, one, two, three, four.
Uh I'll say yes.
Okay.
As long as we can continue to have this education program. That is critical, critical, and not on fireworks, on fire.
Okay, so we have a majority to bring forth this ordinance. Um, you know, I don't speak out a whole lot as mayor, but one thing I will say is we are so close to the county on so many sides and the county has five days of lighting off fireworks. So I would encourage council to reach out to county councils, state representatives. If you really want to make this happen and protect the city, then it's gotta be more than just the city of Gig Harbor. Because um it ju- just from a logistical standpoint, we are, we have half neighborhoods in the city limits and half neighborhoods in the county. And so there is still a chance for our city to burn down because of the county laws that surround us. So just throwing that out there, just, I'm just throwing it out there. So um Councilmember Barber?
Thank you. That reminded me of one other thing that um I, I think that we have, that I've discussed this with a couple of people that at a future um study session or a council meeting, I would like to hear from um probably um Chief Bucy and Paul Rice and others about what our evacuation plan is in the event of a fire. And I know that that is being discussed and in the works. So I don't want you to say anything today, but I want to make sure that we put that on an agenda for a future day.
Chief, you started to speak, would you?
Well, I'm just, it's funny, I'm literally typing a, an email to Councilmember Wook right now about that very topic. So I'll just copy all of you.
Perfect. Okay, so Paul um and Katrina, Josh, we have our direction for preparing an ordinance. Um Councilmember Wook? You're, oh, you're on mute.
I have my hand up because there's another issue right after we're done with fireworks, so.
Oh, okay. Um, yes, and we do um have an executive session we need to go into before I open it up for other discussion items. So if we are, if we are done with our item number two for fireworks, I thank you um Chief Bucy and uh Paul Rice for being here with us and for your expertise. And um you can hang on to this meeting if you want to until we get back. But um so we are going to go into a second executive session. Uh we will now go into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss the acquisition of real estate per RCW four-two dot three-zero dot one-one-zero parentheses B. No action will be taken following the executive session. And this will also be joined by staff Matthew Kio, uh Daniel Kenny and Katrina Knutson and Jeff Langham if he's available. So thank you, council.
Thank you.
We'll return, I'm sorry, we'll return at four fifty-five PM.
The executive session has been extended for an additional five minutes until five o'clock PM. The executive session has been extended for an additional five minutes until five oh six PM.
Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. The time is five oh seven PM. We've returned from executive section, our exec- executive session where no action will be taken. Um and so now we, we've concluded our regular discussion items. And is there anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Wook?
Yes, thank you so much. I had a discussion today with Jeff Langham, our Public Works Director. Uh this is regarding Thirty-Eighth Street, Thirty-Eighth Street between Fifty-Sixth and Hunt. And as we know, uh this is ripe and it's in our, uh it's going to have sidewalks. And uh the city property is both sides of these, of this street um through the uh public right-of-way on the county side, right, Jeff? Anyway, my question to Jeff, because we know that the east side uh of, of Thirty-Eighth Street, which is in, in the city and all those houses are in the city, is also the side of the street with the most mature trees. And to put a sidewalk there is going to probably take down a lot of those trees. So my Jeff, my question to Jeff was, is it possible to put the sidewalk on the west side of Thirty-Eighth Street? That is the side of Thirty-Eighth Street where I think the city owns the public right-of-way, but the houses are in the county. And if you look on Thirty-Eighth Street, when you drive there, you will find that the, the uh pathway is on the west side. And that is, that's the largest pathway. It seems to be the path that all the moms with their baby buggies walk on, because it is the, it is the widest pathway to go. So my question to Jeff was, can we put the sidewalk over there and how we go about it? And now I'll leave it up to Jeff.
Uh thank you, Councilmember Wook. Uh yeah, the, long and short it is that with, right now, staff is finalizing as of tomorrow, the scope and fee and contract for the Thirty-Eighth Avenue half-foot improvements. Um we are, the consultant has provided us with a scope and a fee that will um has focused on placing the improvements on the east side of the road. I can bring up images if anybody wants to look at it. Uh but if we are to add to their scope to consider placing sidewalks on the west side, we either have to switch completely, which isn't hard to do, or we have to say do it on both. And the only way we'll know what the impacts are on both sides is to actually not just do the survey, but also to uh do a preliminary design and run the sidewalk down both sides and see where the impacts will be. The, right now, our timeframe is a milestone coming to, forward to us as of August nineteenth. That is the deadline for submitting a TIB grant application for this. We need a conceptual design with a conceptual cost estimate. We bait, if we're able to get a scope and fee from the consultant and contract finalized by next Friday, we will meet the deadline for submitting items to the June thirteenth council meeting. If we have to go back and open the scope and fee and add to it, we may miss our June thirteenth deadline and have it pushed forward to June twenty-seventh. That would only leave the consultant a few weeks, five weeks or so, to finalize the design and cost estimate, which is really tight. And so I, I just feasibility-wise, it would be very challenging for us to go back and consider uh something else, uh sidewalks on the west side and the east side um and meet our deadline for TIB.
But you could consider it on the west side and you would meet your date.
We, we could consider on the west side. Again, as you had mentioned, Councilmember Wook, that sidewalk would then, even though the right-of-way is fully city's right-of-way, uh that sidewalk on the west side would serve primarily county residents. So I don't know if that, that's a decision council gets to make. I can tell you that Thirty-Eighth Avenue Phase One A was placed on the east side specifically, and it has always been in concept that it would continue on the east side because of the um serving the city residents versus the county residents. And there's one other, oh, I said, there's one other item that I haven't spoken to Councilmember Wook about, but I have to make a decision about soon, which is do we include a scope and fee request for extending the sewer line? Right now, we have a very deep sewer, about twenty-four feet deep at the intersection of Fifty-Sixth and Thirty-Eighth. We could design that sewer extension the rest of the way north in the sewer basin up along with the construction project. Sewer utility would pay for it, not the general fund. But if we put sidewalks on the west side, it will probably not impact the sewer the same. And that's something I just started to talk about staff this afternoon about.
So who hooks up? So if we put sewer line in there, who would be the new sewer ratepayers, I guess? Who'd be using the sewer?
Everybody in what is considered Basin Ten that is north of Fifty-Sixth. It's hard to describe, but it's essentially anybody, the Fox Run. Fox Run would connect to it once there is a sewer lift station number ten A constructed, which we don't have in our budget to construct anyway. We, the, 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 though, the comment I make is just to say that we may be putting a sewer line in also if we construct the sidewalk on the east side. If we construct it on the west side, we probably won't because we're not building, rebuilding that section of roadway.
So the citizens who live on the east side, are they all on septic then?
Uh everyone except for Fox Run Platt is on septic.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
Thanks. So assuming we, it's too difficult to get the consultant to, or get a scope out, meet these deadlines to move it to the west side, what extra steps are you proposing to save the trees, as many trees as you can on the east side?
Well, it would be possibly burying the standards in that how far, what the roadway cross-section would look like, bringing the sidewalk in some sections a little closer to the roadway. That's a safety issue that I don't really like going down that path. Or we work with community development planning to install this pervious sidewalk and try and reduce some of the setbacks uh required between hard surface area sidewalk and drip line of trees.
So is that in construction scope? So is that in the current scope?
It is in the scope to have uh an arborist added to the consultant's work and work with the city uh uh planning department on trying to reduce that, yes.
And so uh the issue about the sewer line, you'd have, that's not in the scope right now. So if you wanted to add that, you'd have to delay the scope anyway, right?
No, it's, it's drafted in the scope right now. I, I, I am supposed to make a decision on whether or not that drafted language goes forward as an additive item or in the main scope.
Okay, so.
Dollar short.
Okay. Yeah. Sounds, so we had a, the issue brought up of the trees potentially moving the sidewalk to the other side. I don't know if there's council concurrence on that, if we're gonna ask uh Jeff to move forward with the scope, as is Jeff, do you need direction if you're including the sewer component?
No, that will come when we award the contract as a additive scope item or not.
Okay. So from council, it would be good to know if we would like Jeff to pause and consider moving the sidewalks or if we go forward as is with sidewalks on the city side of Thirty-Eighth. Councilmember Denson?
Yeah, did you talk about any issues we may have with this, working with the county right-of-way? And I mean, couldn't that really delay this too?
It's not the county's right-of-way, it's the city's right-of-way.
On the other side of the street too? Okay.
The ci- yeah, where the city has full sixty-foot right-of-way is all the cities.
So we, so yes, we need concurrence, whether, and honestly, council, it's really late in the game to be asking for these types of changes. I know Jeff's not coming right out and saying that, but I'm gonna come right out and say that. These questions and thoughts should have been thought of ninety days ago when there was more time and we weren't up against deadlines. So it's not that council can't do this and, and go this way, but it would create a lot of, it would undo a lot of work that's already been done by our engineers and it would cause a lot of staff time, additional staff time to try to do something like this late in, late hour, late in the game. So I'm just voicing my support for our staff who are working really hard to try to get these items done. And when we throw wrenches in it like this, potentially, it just creates a lot of issues. So it's not that council can't do this. I just really want you to be aware that staff time is very important. And um the work that's already been done, I don't really want to see that be undone. But so again, I'm, you know, I don't often speak out, but I really have come to protect our staff's time a lot more when I see them working so hard. So uh Councilmember Starset?
Yes, thanks. I had to shut off my video trying to see if we don't have a rain out tonight. But Mayor Markley, I appreciate you speaking up. Um I, I would like to see us just move forward with this. I think, you know, it's part of our job and yeah, some of us are new, maybe didn't catch this thing to bring things up earlier. And we'll look at other projects differently, but I'd like to see us just move forward. There's been a lot of work done already and on us to, you know, bring these things up in advance. Thanks.
Okay, so maybe um unless there's other council comments, maybe a show of hands for support to move um forward as is, or show of hands to move the sidewalks to their side of the street? Which would you like, Jeff? Direction?
I, I would, I would like to first start, just ask if we proceed as we've been already going with sidewalks on the east side.
Okay, so raise of hands for those that support that. One, two, three, four. Okay, okay. So clear direction, thank you, council, very much for considering all of those things and uh considering staff time, really appreciate you doing that. Councilmember Henderson?
Yeah, I'm, I, I voted for this in deference to Jeff. Um I, I'd like to figure out a way that this doesn't come up. Sometimes we don't hear about it and then all of a sudden we're presented something that we have issues on and it's, and we're told, oh, it's too late, or we're gonna have to do this or that. So if we can come up with some sort of a feedback system where we kind of hear about this ahead of time and we kind of know what the hot topics are, trees and, and keeping our trees and whatever else. So when we have projects like this at the early stages before it's too late, that's the time to come to us. I, I would appreciate that. That way we don't have this kind of last minute, gosh, you throwing a monkey wrench and everything. I understand, I've written scopes of work myself. I know it's a pain in the patootie when somebody comes in at the last minute and says, hey, can you do this? Well, okay, here's your, you know, here's your option, we're gonna have to delay it, it's gonna cost more money. I'd just like to get something set up that this doesn't keep happening because at some point it feels like, eh, maybe something's going on. So if we can do that, I'd be very, very appreciative of that. And I think everybody else would be too, so we're not throwing monkey wrenches in there.
Councilmember Henderson, we'll talk about that internally and um ask Jeff and his team for what they suggest. Councilmember Denson?
Yeah, I think Roger's got a good idea. I mean, in all fairness, this project has come before council and I don't think any of us thought about it. Maybe we need to take a closer look at the street and, and be thinking, is this the best we can do for trees? Is this, you know, the best we can do for safety? And so, you know, we, we did have an opportunity and we are not maybe keeping those things top of mind like we should. So we should be doing that and I know staff will continue to work to do that. And I just wanted to thank Jenny for bringing this forward because it was actually brought forward by a, a neighbor, a constituent just recently. And I know for me, I was like, well, gosh, I hadn't even thought about that. So we do need to be thinking of these things earlier. Um and I just wanted to thank Jenny for, for sticking her neck out and, and at least bringing it up as an option so we could discuss it. So thank you.
Yeah, if nothing else, it will help with future conversations and future projects. Sorry, Katrina, I didn't mean to catch up. I just, I wanted to know on behalf, I, I appreciate what Councilmember Denson said and Councilmember Wook bringing this up. I do want to give um Jeff the, some credit here. He has been talking about um the trees on the sidewalk and asking about ideas and discussing with the planners of, you know, certain ways what we can do. So I, I do want to throw that out there, that Jeff was thinking about that even prior to the citizen um asking. So I know Jeff may not have said that about himself, but he has been working on that. Just wanted to let you know. Yeah, thank you. Um, okay, anything else for the good of the order? Councilmember Barber?
Yes, sorry, I know everybody wants to get off the call, but um I wanted to bring up one last thing. And while everybody is on the call, and that is um flags and Pride Month. Um I was really proud on Monday that we unanimously passed the Pride Resolution for the month of June and was hoping that we would be able to put flags in the planter boxes at um downtown on um at the Windermere Building and across the street from that. That unfortunately has not worked out. And um so what we have been talking about um with, Brendan and I have been talking with the city about is seeing if we could put flags in the planters at, in the city parks. with Brendan, I've been talking with the city about is seeing if we could put flags in the planters at, in the city parks. And thinking that that was a really good idea and everything's moving forward. And then, as I call him lovingly, Mr. Wet Blanket himself, our city clerk, no, who is doing his best to keep us in line and keep us doing all of our ordinances and that kind of thing. Josh said, well, but what about this? And then he brought Daniel in, and of course, Daniel says, so what about this? So I wanted to talk about it a little bit tonight because I'd like to hear from them. But I am, I will just say outright, I am really, really hoping that we can find a way as a council that we can show our city and show the people who live in this city that they really are loved and they really are cared for, and we want them to feel welcome here. So at this point, Josh, Daniel, if you guys want to talk about what the concerns are and help us figure out a way to do this.
Yeah, sure, absolutely, Councilmember Barber. And I'll have Daniel weigh in too, because he's probably more knowledgeable than I am. But what we're looking at is displays, basically displays on public property. And the only way that the city's really addressed that in the past is we have a display policy for our holiday display that we put up, you know, each month during, or each year during the month of December. We don't really have a policy or a procedure for doing anything other than that. So while the city has the ability to do that without having a policy in place that kind of gives us guidance on when we should allow it and when we should not allow it, it's difficult for, well, for me as a clerk to say when we should be considering that and when we shouldn't be. I know that council has on their schedule for, I believe it's one of the June study sessions to revisit that holiday display policy. And I think that would be a great time to bring this up and come up with a policy for when and how council wants to allow displays like this to happen. But outside of having that, I don't really know how to, how to proceed with doing something right away. And maybe Daniel can fill in a little bit more on, on his thoughts on that.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. And I, I will gladly take the wet blanket comment away from Josh because that's typically.
I mean it in a very good way.
Yeah, no, no, of course. But no, I mean, I typically rain on brides. But, um, you know, for, so this is going to be, and again, I, I don't remember who all would have been around. And Councilmember Luke, it probably, like you noted earlier, would have just been you if, if even that with the holiday display. We had the Mother Mary and Baby Jesus in, in the audience for that discussion with council. It was very involved. And the, the issue that you run into is that the passionate desires to have displays, signs, things, things like this for a cause like this are equally applicable to those gatherings and intended displays that might not be as widely accepted or desired. Those are all, those are all expressions of ideology, political, religious, whatever beliefs. And as soon as the city starts picking and choosing between those for who gets opportunities to utilize the resources of the city, we have trouble. And so that was the detailed discussion that, that came up with the holiday displays. There's a slightly different legal framework for that, but it is very analogous to what we're dealing with in a scenario like this. Is that we just need to make sure that if you're going to say that city parks are open for an ideological, political, religious, whatever expression, that it's going to also be open to, to others as well, not just those that the city chooses as desirable. And so that's, that's the problem. And that's why I think Josh was saying that you could, in theory, open up your parks to flags of all types and signs of all types, subject to the sign code. Where right now, you can't do that. But it, it just, it creates some issues that I think you're going to need to talk through as a council, as on a policy level.
Councilmember Look.
So I believe that the holiday display says that right now that the mayor is the one who decides what goes in the parks. And the discussion I'm hoping on the June meeting will be that says that the council votes on what goes in our parks. It's not really, it's not the nativity set, that's a whole other thing. This is a, this is a holiday display policy on who decides what goes in our parks. And, and, and the council would vote on what goes in the parks. That's what, right, right now, it's the mayor decides what goes in the parks. And, and, and so my, my conversation hopefully will be that the council, it will be by vote of the council what goes in our parks. Other than the nativity set, that's a whole different thing, right? So, so that's what that's about. And I, I don't know why the council, if the council wants, I mean, I guess we can't do it now because it's in the ordinance. Although I think the mayor could decide if she wants to put these in the parks. But at some point in time, the council should be able to vote. If they want to see these flags in the parks, then we vote and the flags go in the parks. And that, it's not, not appropriate?
No. Sorry, the, the, the whole point is that the city council shouldn't be picking one expression to get the benefits that others do not. The holiday policy, and I was just trying to quickly find it to pull it back up. It's been a couple of years since I looked at it.
Yeah.
Again, slightly different legal framework, but for that, it is to create a holiday display that is broad enough in content that it does not single out a particular expression. The nativity being the, the thing that started that, it was at the forefront. And so there is legal framework that says a city can have a holiday display as long as it does not get viewed as endorsing a particular religion. Now, we're, we're moving away from the religious framework of that for this. The content neutrality is still what we're working with. What we don't want is, again, to pick and choose the content of what is being expressed. So if you wanted to allow flags or allow signs of a certain size and, and physical type in a particular location, like you've done in your rights of way under your sign code, you could do that. But there could be any number of people that could fall within that allowance that could utilize that, not just the one that you're exploring right now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lichten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I, I appreciate these comments. I'm just trying to figure out, and I know it's late, and I know that, you know, this might be something that we need to take offline after this meeting. But I would love to hear from other council and staff. Are there ways that we can celebrate? You know, are there alternatives to where we don't involve, you know, going through the ordinances and the signs and the flags? You know, are there, are there other options that people would be open to? And that there would be a majority to support? Because I hate, you know, it's the first time in history that we've done Pride Month, and I would hate that we don't do anything. I, I, I just feel like, you know, are there thoughts on, you know, other ideas? Or maybe we should just continue this offline?
Josh, did you want to talk about the option for a special expressive permit?
Yeah, that's, that's always an option for basically anyone to, to get a special expressive event permit for activities in the parks. Or if you want to go down to the park and have the flags and give out the flags and have people join you for an event, that's something the city basically is mandated to approve for anyone that wants to do that in a park. But that is, that's an event, so it's not a standing thing that will just be there in the park. It's just for the given time that you've got the event scheduled for. But, but that is an option that we can do. If, if you want to show some kind of demonstration or some kind of support event, we could do something like that pretty easily.
So something, let's say, on a certain date, and we pick a time, and those that choose to participate and want to be a part of it could be a part of it, something like that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Right, can it be part of another event? Or occur like during a weekend of a festival?
I'd have to look at the event code for that again. We may not, the way I understand it, if I remember correctly, and I haven't looked at it recently, but I think we may not approve your event before, like if it's occurring like at the same time as the gig festival.
Yeah.
We, we may not be able to approve that, but we also would not be able to prevent you from holding it, if, if I remember correctly. But I'd have to look at that specific code section.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and I, I was just thinking that's a time when a lot of people are there. But I wanted to make sure to follow, you know, what, what the standards are, so thanks.
Yeah.
What about during the farmer's market?
I'd have to look at the event code, the special events code again for that. I, I know there are some restrictions on having multiple events at the, like say, at the Scancy Brothers Park simultaneously, but I don't recall off the top of my head how that works. But regard, regardless, and the, the city stance will always be that if someone is doing a, a special expressive type activity, we do not have really the ability to deny that or prevent it. So we, with the permit process, we would try to encourage people to use a time when it's more appropriate to use the park, when there's not other things going on. But we don't really have the, the right to infringe on people's free speech ability in general.
Councilmember Lichten.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just to clarify, so if we have an event and those that participate want to participate, and we express that the city, you know, has passed the resolution or the council has passed the resolution for Pride Month, and we can offer that on behalf of the city, can we also encourage, you know, people individually who want to participate to celebrate pride in their own way and speak for the city? Are we?
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be allowable. I think the one thing we wouldn't want to do is have it appear to be something that the city is sponsoring or putting on. So it's, uh, city staff and council members can be involved, they can be leading it. But it should probably not be, if it's going to be a special expressive event, I don't think it should be something that is organized and sanctioned by the city necessarily.
But it could be brought together and those that want to participate could be, could participate on a voluntary basis?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great, that's, that's really helpful.
And I guess what I wonder at this point, which is kind of back where we were before, if um, other council members are interested in participating, let me or council member like it's know. And then we will talk and keep the city folk, city staff involved in what we're discussing and try to come up with a plan that is a go, hopefully as close to June one as we can.
And, and just to add to that, any city staff that want to be a part of it, we would certainly welcome, you know, as well. So maybe this is something we take offline on this late hour. And then we'll just come up with a plan and we'll send an email or something out informationally. So, okay.
Sounds good. Thank you, council. Yes, we, we do need to adjourn. So with that, is there a motion?
Mayor, just one quick order of business. We do have a special city council meeting scheduled for next Wednesday at two o'clock. I sent notice out to council, I haven't heard any feedback that anyone can't make that time, but just putting that out there that we do have that on the schedule now.
Okay, great, thank you for the reminder. All right, a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Hey, good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.